For what?
Hundred dollars.
Oh, great.
Skate?
She's gonna bounce it.
We need to get a picture cut here. A picture taken.
For what?
All right.
All right.
Oh.
Vacation, you got all this mire slowly now.
I don't know about that now.
Don't stay in business.
I gotta break 'em off.
Hell, would I?
Ragged.
Yeah, that's what you're on.
Can't afford gas, that's it.
I'm gonna provide it.
It's come down now.
I was milking. Lucky. Thirty.
Yeah.
Two ninety-nine.
Yeah. It's only... Um, East End. The ladies, um...
My hose flexed here. In my big pickup, twenty-five hundred. Flexed here. Suzanne's little car, not flexed here. If they're gonna force people to use it, they oughta make every car and then make every gas station sell.
That's it? Pretty rosy. Fourth, but I'm...
Doing X.
They'll be...
Axes. Hand pull.
Good.
Break.
State multiple... Well... To do that.
And the dip. Fifty. Barely, that's it. I was sworn to fifty. So...
Get out to you.
We don't, we don't want that, I can tell you.
No, 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 no.
Veterans Park, Veterans Brooks, uh...
Press for Farm.
Didn't say anything.
A couple years.
Yep.
Didn't bounce.
Not yet.
Unless...
I think...
That plus, I didn't probably realize what they were saying. It's the truth with them. This is getting close.
Lubricated, uh...
Working down. It's falling.
Come on, Cam.
Fuck, I'm... Day yesterday, she done, she got to bring the grand boys today.
We'll go ahead and call our meeting order and welcome everybody here tonight. If you would, let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by an invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's Mr. Johnny Wishon, if he would, to lead us in the invocation, please.
Let's pray. Lord, we thank you for this day and for many blessings that each new day brings. We give you special thanks that we're able to meet here as a county and conduct the county business. Lord, we ask that as we conduct our business, if we disagree, that we can agree to disagree and be respectful to each other. Bless the decision makers, give them wisdom and guidance to make decisions that are best for our county and pleasing to you. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Thank you. Any changes to this? Stands as is, do I hear a motion to accept? Good motion, second. All in favor? Five oh. Just everybody's read the minutes from seven five, seven eighteen, and seven twenty-five. So, entertain a motion to accept as written.
Move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion second, any discussion? All in favor? Five oh. Before we open the public comment, time I'd like to remind this group that anyone who wishes to speak will have the opportunity to do so. Each individual speaker will be limited to three minutes. Anyone speaking on behalf of three or more people will be limited to five minutes. Please state your name for the record, direct all comments to the Board of Commissioners, and be civil with all comments. Please remain quiet in the audience. Public comment is not a time for deliberation, discussion, or answers to questions, but a time for citizens of Allegheny County to speak to the Board of Commissioners. These comments will be recorded and transcribed as part of the official minutes of this meeting. And at this time, we'll open floor for public comments. And I have a list here. Dr. Denise Bryant.
Speak for more than three people, so I'm gonna give a little bit more than three minutes. First of all, greetings. As you all know, I'm Dr. Denise Bryant, and I serve as the Medical Director for Emergency Services in Allegheny County, and I have since two thousand eleven. I am also an ER physician at Allegheny Health, and I'm employed in the primary care office at the hospital as well. And I have the unique position in this issue of transport, as I am involved in all sides of it. And I'm also, obviously, a citizen of Allegheny County, and I have a lot of family in this county. So these decisions very much matter to me. I believe we all have the same fundamental goal of providing the best care we can for the citizens, given the resources we have available. I choose to assume everyone involved has good intentions. I feel the fundamental problem we are dealing with right now is a lack of communication and miscommunication. But I also believe if all the involved entities work together, we can find common ground. Many of these obstacles are not unique to EMS, Allegheny County, or even to medicine. Every industry and government body in America is dealing with staffing shortages, equipment shortages, delays, and increased needs. The tertiary hospitals do not have staffing, which then leads to decreased bed availability and delay in transport, which then backs up the small community hospitals, leading to overwhelmed ERs with long waits at times, which then leads to EMS caring for and transporting much sicker patients. It is a fact that we have had an extremely hard time, both recruiting and retaining adequate coverage at EMS for a significant time. Back around May, we reached a crisis level at EMS. We usually have three full-time crews of four members, and we had three people leave in a short period of time, putting us down almost an entire crew. And we are aware that some of our full-time staff will retire in the next five years. Back in May, the county manager, myself, and others began a series of talks to explore reasons for our difficulty and potential solutions. We discussed that our paramedics were paid significantly less than surrounding counties and did not receive as much time off. Also, they were not being paid standard overtime and instead using a formula that led to them actually making less per hour when they worked more. Another factor is that many hospitals have started utilizing paramedics, especially in their ERs, to offset their nursing shortages, which means there are less paramedics available to hire. We do not offer any flexibility in our schedule, only offering twenty-four-hour shifts, which made it difficult for anyone who worked somewhere else to even help us part-time. Don't get me wrong, there were other reasons that people left, such as change in career, relocation, retirement, personality conflicts, disagreements, to name a few. We did discuss exploring the possibility of hiring EMT basics and bridging them to paramedics, which we are pursuing, but by state protocols, they are much more limited in their scope of practice, what they can do. At no point in any of these conversations was the idea of dropping to one ambulance overnight ever brought up or discussed with me. I was never asked or invited to meet with you to discuss this option. No county commissioner ever approached me to talk about the plan or ask me any questions. I was not informed of the plan until after it was presented to EMS on July seventh. In fact, I was first made aware of it later that day by ER staff. I was, it was not until July fifteenth that the plan was officially presented to me by a county representative. I raised some concerns about the plan, and especially the wording of the transport policy, clarified that we actually would only be having transport available to Winston from eight till five, because if you want to have the second ambulance back in the county by eight PM, then they're not gonna be available to transport to Winston after five. I brought up concerns about what was defined as emergent and who makes that determination, the need for routine transports back to Genesis and to people's homes in the county overnight. Another concern is that we usually have new hires ride with the supervisor for at least six weeks, and every other, and every other overnight shift that a crew works under this new plan, there is no supervisor, so they would be off every other night. I requested a written draft of the revised transport policy, including all of the things we had talked about in the meeting in writing, to have to review and discuss before I endorsed it, but reported with those changes, I was willing to at least try this plan. I raised concerns about times that there are events in the county after eight PM, like lawnmower races and demolition derbies, a potential mass casualty event, or even just having the one ambulance out of the county on an emergent transport, and something happened in the county, a heart attack, a stroke, a car accident. I was assured that a second unit could be called in at any time if needed, though I have not seen that in writing anywhere. Several of the paramedics have already offered to be on call without pay, as long as they are paid if they come in. They are feeling like the improvements in their salary and work situation has come at the price of the citizens of Allegheny County, and they are saddened by this, but they should not feel guilty. Many of them have worked in this county their entire career, knowing that they could go to a neighboring county and be paid much more. They are dedicated to this community and have proven it over and over. As part of the meeting, I chair quarterly for EMS, which involves most of the services in the county. I opened up for discussion, comments, and suggestions. This was last Friday. They had several legitimate concerns related to only having one ambulance in service overnight. I imagine you'll hear some of that tonight. I did take notes, and I'm happy to talk to any of you about those suggestions and comments they made. A consistent theme among them, among their comments, was that they felt that folks on the front line that provide the care and transport we are discussing were not consulted on the impact of this plan. I fear these issues are driving a wedge between some of our most valuable services in this county. I firmly believe if we all work together, we can come up with solutions. There are two things this county is required by the state to provide in terms of EMS. If somebody calls nine-one-one, somebody has to respond. And whatever level of service you provide, the highest level of service you provide, you have to provide twenty-four hours a day. Allegheny Rescue's agreement with the county does not require them to do any transport. And it is also true that EMS has no obligation to Allegheny Health or to transport the Allegheny, from Allegheny Health to any other hospital. But I feel the county and all of us do have a responsibility to those patients who are citizens of Allegheny County to help provide them with the best health care we can. May we all work together to do that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, appreciate it. Next up, Johnny Wishon.
Johnny Wishon, I'm here on behalf of the County Agriculture Committee. I think when, when there were some folks reappointed or appointed, I think it's about a month or so ago, there were some questions about term limits and that kind of thing. So I just want to address some points, so you, as the commissioners, will have a good comfort level that you've done the right thing, or if we're not doing something right, we can address that as well. So, anyway, our Ag Advisory Board was founded here in Allegheny County in September of two thousand fourteen. So we have been in existence for eight years. After a couple of years, we realized that there was a whole lot of overlap between the Farmland Preservation Committee and our committee. So in April of two thousand eighteen, the two boards merged. So these two are one body now. The tenure of these boards are three terms of three years, if, if, if so choose, okay? Now, I've been on there eight years, and I was just appointed to my third three-year term. So that's gonna put me at eleven, I'll explain. The initial board, when we put this thing together, we had, in order to stagger the terms, you don't want everybody going off at the same time, y'all understand that, we had one-year terms, two-year terms, and three-year terms. So if you were appointed to a one-year term or a two-year term, you could serve those terms, and then your three, three-year consecutive terms would then start. So I was appointed to a two-year term. I'm gonna, I just got into my third three-year term, so I'll end up being on the board eleven years. So, anyway, I told somebody I thought it was a life sentence, I don't... But anyway, that's, that's how this board was set up, that's how long this board has been in existence. So, anyway, I did want to go over a few of our accomplishments during this, this period of time. When these two boards first merged, the farmer's market was the big thing on our agenda. So we kinda got behind that and helped push that, and look how good the farmer's market is doing now. We have the Young Producers Education and awards, Century Farmer, the Ag Hall of Fame. We do the Ag Fair, which I'm gonna give you guys an update on here in just a little bit. We continue with the function of the Farmland Preservation Committee. So anytime somebody comes to our committee wanting to put land in the farmland preservation program, we take time during our committee and we vote on that as well. Other needs with county agriculture as they arise, we address those. And I'm proud to say, too, that, that Grace and Ann Ash County have decided to, over the last couple of years, form these, an agriculture committee, and we've kinda been the model that they've looked at. We've got a lot of diversity on our board, I'm proud of that. We've got age diversity from twenty-one to ninety-plus. We have male and female. We have political diversity. And we strive really hard to make sure we've got all the agriculture commodities represented from all parts of the county as well. So, anyway, there were questions, I think, upon some reappointments. I hope maybe I've cleared it up just a little bit, and I know this is not a back-and-forth at this time, but I'll be glad to answer any questions at any other time, if y'all have them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification.
Sir.
Next, Mr. Brad May.
Brad May, been here this county for fifty-six years. And I'm, I'm, I'm here to speak on the ambulance service, on losing a unit. I'm thirty-five-year volunteer, fireman, medical responder. And I was appalled when I heard that this had happened. I mean, we've always had two units, and where we live, just last night, we had a ten-fifty via golf cart, four people on it. Luckily, we was able to, they transported two in one unit. This could went a whole nother direction. And what concerns me is we have one major cardiac vehicle accident, and everything's tied up in Pine Creek, Roaring Gap, Glade Creek gets a call. And these guys right here, they're volunteers. And I know they say, "Well, we're gonna use the volunteers," but guys, we know we pushed them so far. I mean, I'm a volunteer, and you're not gonna get many that's gonna serve thirty-five years today. And I don't wanna see a burnout come with our squad, and we've got a good squad that works and busts its tail. And I just hope that you all will review this and look and see if there's any way we can have that unit back on. I mean, we've had good people that's left here, and a lot of them left, and I talked to them, good friends with them, worked with them. They left due to pay. Why can we not get our pay scale where it needs to be and keep our good people here at Allegheny? We've got, Allegheny's a place where people wants to come. I mean, look how our numbers has grown in the last few years. But this is, this is gonna hurt, 'cause I've had many tell me, "Why, why do I wanna live there when they're cutting these services?" I just hope you all go back into your closed session in the coming weeks. You can find it in your heart or the money somewhere to add this back. You can find it in your heart or the money somewhere to add this back to the system. Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. This is John, is the next one up, I'm not sure. Okay.
I'm Joseph McGrady, chief of, as part of Allegheny Volunteer Fire Department. I've just got a few points I want to hit. One policy change that's come about is when we have one unit after 8:00 PM, EMS is not to respond to structured fires, period. There's some talk that they spend a long time on structured fires, and most of the time, nothing happens, which is true. We're fortunate. But big thing is, you know, you plan ahead, play the what-if game. What if we find somebody in the house? If a homeowner was trying to fight a fire before we got there, falls over. Or if a firefighter gets dehydrated, has a heart attack, has a fall, cut. Really limiting ourself, you know, on the care we can provide the public and our personnel by not having ALS support there with us. No, maybe it comes down, it's more of a money issue. If we're setting on a structured fire, instead of doing transports, we're not making money. Maybe that's the case, but if that's the case, you know, looking at it wrong. I had a service to watch out for each other's backs and the public. And what do we do if, let's say, one major traffic accident, you've got two vehicles, multiple people, well, you've got EMS, you've got the rescue squad, and possibly Laurel Springs' truck tied up. All county units are taxed out right then, except for fire departments. And you have a structured fire, you know, we'll have no medical support. We're just on our own. If we have to have a unit for maybe a firefighter going down, heart attack, we're going to have to call for another county unit to respond from a different county, and, you know, 30, 45 minutes later, you know, it's not going to go well. Had one paramedic to tell me that we had a structured fire last week, saying, you know, we need EMS here. What if we do find somebody? What if a firefighter goes down? He said, that's a whole lot of what-ifs. The World Emergency Services, we're working on a whole lot of what-ifs. You've got to play the what-if game. You've got to plan ahead. And if you're not playing the what-if game and planning ahead, you're doing a disservice to your community and your personnel. That's, that's the big thing. We're kind of leaving ourselves and the public high and dry, in my opinion, not being able to provide, like you mentioned, was expecting ALS service, and they're not going to get it. Drag somebody out of the house, but, you know, to be frank, you know, what good is it going to do when you drag them out and they're going to die on their front lawn? Just what I've got.
Thank you, Joseph. Mr. Jason Long.
Good evening, commissioners and Commissioner Womack. Most of y'all know me, I'm Jason Long, the chief of Allegheny Rescue. Be short and sweet about it here. I come to you not, not only as the chief of Allegheny Rescue, but as a concerned citizen as well. On Thursday, July the 7th, at 11:00 AM, I received a message from Linda, the EMS director, to come to EMS base. When I went down there, I had no idea what I was walking into. Apparently, there was a meeting with EMS supervisors and staff about their schedule. Keep in mind, Allegheny, nor Dr. Bryant, the medical director, was involved at this meeting. For the citizens that do not know, the county used to have four EMS personnel and two trucks to serve the community each day for 24 hours. With Allegheny Rescue back and the county staff EMS, they have had both trucks out on calls, which is what dispatch calls an active standby. This means that squad members need to start heading to the station to equip the ambulants for the next 911 call. During this meeting, the discussion about having one 24-hour truck, and at 8:00 PM, a second truck would be out of service, and the second crew would go home, leaving squad members to be on standby even more than they are now, which has been 192 year-to-date. This went into effect July the 26th, so now we are expecting our volunteers to get up in the middle of the night as they're preparing for their full-time jobs the following day to provide for their family even more than they already do, which has been 13 standbys since the change. We normally would not have had if two trucks was in service. ECRS has responded since the change, two times in our ambulants. Allegheny Rescue by far is the most dispatched voluntary emergency service in the county, with calls reaching above 850 for the year as we're speaking. You mentioned our allocation was increased to 90,000 this year, which we are greatly appreciative. However, you failed to mention that the volunteer fire departments get way more than we do, some double that for one fire district, which is approximately 29 square miles. Let, let me remind you that we cover the entire county, 237 square miles. July the 1st was the first, we are the first volunteer organization to have a paid part-time staff during the daytime hours to help cover the daytime call volume. Here's the reason behind the part-time staff decision, mainly because most days, there was only one truck available for daytime hours, and the call volume was so high with our, with our out-of-county transports. We are not able to staff 24 hours a day, nor do we have the option due to money and state regulations and requirements. Allegheny Rescue, along with every fire department citizen, was blindsided by this. This not only will be detrimental to the voluntary emergency service, but to every citizen in Allegheny County. Instead of going in the future with increased call volume, we're going backwards once again. Emergency service in our county should be on the top of the list when it comes to providing services and funding. We have come way too far to be slapped in the face now. Comments were made about funding that would be reduced if rescue squad could not keep up with the extra call volume. Allegheny Rescue asked for 15,000 in the 2023 year budget to help cover the costs of supplies for both ambulances that we currently have, and the remaining budget was to upgrade rescue equipment and help part-time staff personnel. We are not required by the state to even have an ambulance as the only rescue provider in the county, but we have chosen to for the citizens of our county for over 50 years. Both ambulances are paramedic level, they are licensed by the state of North Carolina, just like any other ambulance in the state. We offer the same care as the county staff trucks do and work under the same medical director. I'm deeply, deeply appalled by the decision from our county administration, and no one yet has, has answered the reason why. It cannot be a money issue. We don't have a problem allocating monies to groups that will not affect the citizens such as medical care. Not long ago, I'm sure you will remember, the NC State Treasurer's Office was threatening to take over our funds. We had two trucks then. But now we're overcome the hurdle and drop a truck with increased call volume. In closing, as a concerned citizen, whether it's me, my family member, or my neighbor down the street, we deserve answers. As call volumes increase, we decrease our service to the county. Does not make much sense and has no logic. Thank you.
Next, Mr. Donnie Brim.
Donnie Brim, most of you probably know me from Grandview Memorial Funeral Home. I'm here on behalf of EMS, too. I think we've got some of the best EMS personnel around, and we need two ambulances on duty at all times. We have a lot of retirees in the county, and I was doing a little research today, and from what I understand, the majority of the people, I think it was 52% or over 50 years old, and we all know as we get older, we start having more health problems. And, you know, they're in the life-saving business. I mean, they have to know what they're doing when they get there. I mean, they don't have time to think and question things. They have to, you know, know what to do and get working fast to try to save someone's life. And they've helped us a lot over the years. Some of you may know it, some of you may. I don't know how Harold Church got it worked out many years ago, but EMS has helped us with our home calls here in the county, hospice patients, different things, unintended deaths, whatever it may be, and they also helped Thomas Family Funeral Service some. And, I mean, they've been very helpful to us. Of course, they can get to families quicker than we can. I mean, when someone's passed in the middle of the night, if we get up, you know, we have to get dressed, we have to go to the funeral home and get our vehicle, and then go to the home. And of course, if it's out of the county, we do go, but they have helped us a lot. But, you know, we're very appreciative of what they do, and they've been in our family more than once in life-saving conditions, and also one time we lost someone. But just wanted to be here to support them. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Concludes all the names I have written down here. Does anybody in the audience want to speak that's came in late or anything of the sort? And as time do so, go ahead. You can take the, please.
Around Jane Kraus. I worked with Jimmy. He was the first county manager and worked with each one through. And when we had the flare-up in the 80s, Charles Sodisert was county manager. He called us in at 11:30, 12 o'clock at night, and we went on 24 hours a day from that point. And we didn't, short an ambulance, period. We had only four employees and some part-time, but we started getting part-time from Wilks, anywhere that we could find someone that could work half a shift, shift, you know. So this is not the first hard time, but it is the first time since then that we've not had full two ambulances and squad with two ambulances. Then as it built up, the county has four ambulances, although two of them run at a time. When we first went to the four ambulances, we had all six ambulances out on emergency traffic that night. Because I, I was at the rescue squad, and I run, went and got the fourth county ambulance and went on a diabetic call with it. But again, if, if you can consider how much is needed for two every night, that's the biggest thing I wanted to say and just give you a little history of what it's been through.
Appreciate that. Thank you. What else? Free to come forward. We'll close the public comment section, move on down to the presentation of the board. Ag Fair, Mr. Johnny Wishon.
He's got some support this time. I've got support this time. Johnny Wishon, chair of the Ag Committee.
You're the vice chair of the Ag Committee.
Give you a little fair update, and appreciate the county, y'all are one of the big sponsors of our event. The fair is the 25th through the 28th of August, so if you didn't know it, you know it now, write it down. Some of the new things that we're going to have at the fair this year that we did not have last year. We've got a Christian music concert Friday night. We've got the National Wild Turkey Federation Calling Contest. It's going to be back after a year absence, and from what I understand, it's a qualifier for the national contest. The Allegheny Partnership for Children is going to have a Kids Night on Thursday night. That will be at the Emerson Black Building. It's free of charge for kids, for the, for the younger kids. We feel that's going to get some younger kids in there, and it's going to increase traffic for the exhibits and that kind of thing as well as for the fair. Some of the events that we typically have are also going to be back. We've got the carnival rides, always a big hit. We're going to have food vendors, and I, from what I understand, there's going to be more food vendors there than there was last year. We have multiple livestock shows. We've got a figure-eight race on Saturday night. They've got a corn maze up top with a hayride going up to the corn maze. And then we've got all of the traditional county fair competitions and exhibits and that kind of thing. Am I saying that right, Amy? If you want to enter, if you think you've got the biggest tomato or whatever, if you want to enter some of these competitions, they, they'll have the, with vegetables, crafts, kids, division, that kind of thing. Anybody that's interested, we'd love for you to please enter. Two places you can get the information. Go to the Ag Extension Office, they've got the sheets and the information that you can use to enter. And we're also on Facebook. So go on Facebook, go to the Allegheny County Ag Fair and Pumpkin Festival, and it's going to have all kinds of information there about everything that's going on. The gate for age five and up is $10. You want to say something to this? You want me to keep going? Okay. So it's $10 a person. We have had amazing community support for this event. We've, you know, with help from the county and private donations, we, we feel like we can, we, we did this last year as well. We picked the fourth graders and gave every fourth grader in Allegheny County a free ticket. Well, and we, we drew out of the hat, this year, every first grader in Allegheny County is going to get a free ticket to go to the fair. So, and we'll make sure those go to all three schools, and they'll go home with the school kids. I also want to say that our Ag Board has just been awesome. If you'd have seen the room full of people a week or so ago, I think pretty much everybody, everybody was there. So we've got good support from our board, we've got good support from the community. I don't know where the dollars and cents are falling right now, we've still got money coming in, but it looks to me like we're, we're going to get quite a few more community donations than we did last year, and I thought we hit a home run last year. So, you know, we, we really would love to get this thing to, to the point where we've got enough seed money that, you know, maybe the commissioners didn't have to give us any money, or don't have to give us as much anyway. So that's, that's what we want, and that's where we're headed.
I believe that'll happen sometime. You'll, you'll have enough seed money to make it operate in a few years.
I think so. Questions?
Any questions?
Is the $10 for how many nights? $10 a night?
Yes, that's correct, that's correct, that's correct. We went up, we were really cheap last year. We, we did go up on our price. Of course, everything has gone up, and we're having to pay a little bit more for the rides. So, but it's still, it's still a bargain, that's still, that's a bargain, that's a bargain. Yes, John?
Have you applied to the TDA for your advertising money?
We have, we have, yes, yes. We, we expect to receive $5,000 from them, yes.
That will help.
Yes, yes. And we're working with the chamber on this. And we're working with the Chamber on this. Lisa was at our last meeting and had all kinds of great suggestions and is helping with us too. So we're looking at every avenue we can to get money and get help.
Appreciate the job Ag Valley does. They do a good job out there. We appreciate it.
Other questions? Thank you for your time. Thank you for your support.
Thank you all. Check your calendar.
CNC ACC Youth Conference, Ms. Abby Joins.
Good evening. My name is Abby Joins, and I'm a member of Allegheny County 4-H, and I'm also your youth voice delegate for this year. So being your youth voice delegate means that I am going to attend the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Conference this year, and that takes place in Cabarrus County on August 12th and 13th. I'm very excited to attend this conference in order to learn about county government, roles of county commissioners, and as well as developing leadership skills. And thank you for your support in letting me go to this conference, and I hope to see y'all there. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'll try to be brief. I know we scheduled this a few weeks back, but we'll try to get through it as quickly as possible. I was with you, I think, right around the first of January, and we had typically done this every January, and we always done a January 1 to July, or to December 31 year-end statistics. But because of the way the county budget works, July 1 to June 30, we wanted to get on a fiscal year instead of an actual year. So we'll go through this. Phone over to the sheriff's message will be good. A message from the sheriff. He said, "As your sheriff, I set a goal that we would run a sheriff's office that would be transparent and accountable to the people of Allegheny County. This report is designed to give you, the board, and the citizens of Allegheny County a tangible measurement of services delivered by your sheriff and his team, and this report details this year's crime report as well as financial records. I feel this report also reflects the dedication provided by the hard-working men and women of the Allegheny County Sheriff's Office." So this is our monthly calls for service, broke down from July of '21 through June of '22. And as you can see, 709 for July, 694 for August. On up through June was 802 calls for service. That's a total of 7,212 calls, which equates out to about 20 calls a day. And they vary in nature. Some quick, some take time. Investigations, these are specifically active investigations that was worked throughout the year. We had 76 narcotics cases. That is not charges. There's way more charges than there are actual cases. So 45 break-in and entrances, 51 larcenies, 37 assaults, 23 sexual offenses, 13 larceny of motor vehicles, 37 ID and fraud-related cases, six animal cruelty cases, 11 death investigations, 11 missing persons, 11 weapons offenses, three exploitation of elder, six fugitives, 16 property damages, one arson, three attempted murders, one homicide, and two pursuits for the year. Crime by community, we have split the county into two zones. Zone one being the west, zone two being the east. And in our statistics, we come up with zone one having about 12.5% of all the crime committed would be in zone one, and 87.5% would be in zone two. So as you can see, the, you'll see in a minute, the east side of the county is much busier than the west side of the county. Our busiest days are Wednesday and Thursday, and the busiest hours are between 12 noon and 10 p.m. Our breakdown of arrests by age, so 2.45% of all arrests were between 18 and 20 years of age. 21 to 25 years of age was 10.2. 33.06% was between the ages of 26 and 35, and then 53.29% of all of our arrests were over the age of 35. So that's what the 12% and the remaining percentage, that's what that looks like on our map, on the crime map. So we split Sparta straight down the center, and as you can see, the bulk of all of our Here we go. Drug offenses and by type. So we had 173 drug charges this year, and 121 of the 173 was methamphetamine-related drug charges. 49 marijuana charges and six pill charges, so prescription drugs. So 70% of all of our drug charges are methamphetamine-related. It's been a significant increase, and it's just gradually risen throughout the years. It's to be the drug of choice in our area. Property loss and recoveries by month, and you'll see in the graph the larceny amounts and then the recoveries, but there was a total of $253,334 worth of stolen property reported from July through June. And of that, we recovered $121,276 of that stolen property. So how do we stack up nationwide? Go ahead. There, you got it. So in 2020, and I didn't see 2021 or any early parts from this year, but about 31% of all property nationwide is recovered. It's a pretty low number, but in 2021, '22, our recovery rate was about 47.8%. So it's quite a bit higher than the national average. This is a comparison between 2021 and 2022. I think it's good. So in '21, we had 7,323 calls for service. It has decreased about a percent and a half to 7,212 calls this year. So it went down a little bit. A comparison between last year and this year. Civil process, we had about 756 civil process papers we served last year. It was down to 716 this year. Our criminal warrants, down a little bit too, so we're trending in a good way. 554 last year, 471 this year. IVCs was down from 26 to 17. We assisted other agencies this year 499 times. Last year it was 395. We had 55 domestic violence protective orders last year. We're down to 33 this year. That's a good trend down as well. Incident reports down. So 593 incident reports last year taken. It was down to 544 this year, so that's a good thing. We wrote 60 citations this year. Last year, we didn't account for that. We didn't keep up with it last year, so I'm not sure what that number was last year. We'll have it for next year. Business checks. In 2022, we had 13,615. Last year, we had 16,000 business checks. So a lot of checks. Patrol miles. We are up on patrol miles this year. And visibility does help slow down crime. Being visible out there and everybody seeing you, it deters crime. So we had 243,121 miles this year. Last year, we had 181,000. The SROs, they're, you know, assisting school staff daily. Of course, they're out now. They're providing school safety checks on a daily basis, parking lot safety checks. They're assisting students on a daily basis with a variety of issues. And on average, an SRO will make approximately 4,500 steps during their daily walks. The detention center, it consists of two dorms, nine isolation cells. The local dorm contains about 10 cells that open into a dayroom. Each of the 10 cells will hold two inmates, so we can hold approximately 20 in the local dorm. The fed dorm is a dormitory-style setting, no individual cells. There's 15 bunk beds in there, so we can house about 30. So total capacity is 59 at the moment. We booked 171 inmates this year, but our daily average was about 21. So it seems like it's harder and harder each year to keep anybody in there for any amount of time. They're making bonds or getting out, serving time. But you can see, July started out 24. We held steady in August, 24. September, we had 25, and October, 25. It dipped November, December, and January, down to as low as 17 in January, come back up to 21, is back up to 23 in June. But we're a little over 30 at the moment. Booked 74 females this year. Our yearly daily average population was five. It was as high as nine in June. A lot of transportation this year. In July, we had, I don't know that we've ever run that many miles. We had 14,532 miles in July. It was a big month. It has steadily dropped throughout the year, but we, total transportation miles, just shuttling inmates around the state, was 85,523 miles. That's an average of 7,126 miles a month. Victim service unit, this is a 100% grant-funded unit. You know, you have Marshes Law in North Carolina now, where we're required to give victims notifications within a certain amount of time if anyone's released. We assist them in court and with various other services, but they logged 156 crisis calls. They assisted 114 victims for whether it be domestic violence, sexual assault, stalking. Those are a lot of typical things that they'll do, underserved populations. We had 16,941 visitors to the courthouse this year. That's an average of 65 a day. So it's pretty busy. That's a lot of visitors. 21-22 budget, the sheriff's office and the detention center was budgeted $2.5 million, Of the 2.5, $2,418,026 was expended, and that was the numbers right around the first of July, maybe a week or so into July. That could change a little bit from bills that come in, in the month of July, out of last year's budget. But at that time, we were set to revert $150,000. So total expended would have been 2.4. The breakdown with grant funds and some reimbursements by the state and by the college. So the sheriff's office specifically was a breakdown of 1.5 million of the 2.5. $206,425 of that money is grants. $100,000 is a SRO reimbursement. $10,894 is a Wilks Community College reimbursement. So that would have brought county funds down to about a million, too. Estimation of expenses by service. So of the 2.4 million, jail used approximately 30% of it. The patrol division, another 26% of it. The investigations division, 17%. SROs, 12%. The courts, 4%. Administration, 5%. And victim services, 6%. Collected revenues. So July 21 through June 22, the sheriff's office, the detention center, and asset forfeiture combined brought in $338,188. Immate housing generated the bulk of that with $244,496. That's federal and state inmates. $70,100 was brought in additionally through the detention center fees. $22,990 was generated through sheriff's office fees, such as civil process and various other fingerprint, things like that. And $602 come in this year in asset forfeiture. That's up and down. Last year was a big year for asset forfeiture. Revenues and grants combined brought in $544,613. How does that all look in relation to the $2.5 million budget? So the budget for the sheriff's office and jail, $2,568,050. Collected funds, I-44, 613. Used budget, $150,024. So that would offset the tax-based dollars, or the tax dollars, to $1,873,413. The sheriff's office budget in relation to the county's operational budget. So 21-22 county budget was $21,431,91. Our budget, $2.5 million, which is about 11.98% of the county's budget. How do we stack up regionally? So this is a comparison of each sheriff's office with their respective county budgets. It's not a comparison of us versus them. It's not a comparison of us versus them. It's a comparison of them versus them. So our portion of the county's budget is 11.98%. Wilkes County's sheriff's office versus their operational budget is 12.69%. Watauga's, 12.91%. Surrey County's, 13.97%. Ash County's, 14.9%. Stokes County, 16.77%. And Yadkin County, 17.11% or 11. The average regional would be 14.21%, which would be a difference of us of two, almost two and a quarter percent. That would equate in local dollars to about 477,000. The top, of course, Yadkin, was 17.11. That's a difference of 5.13%. That would equate out to a little over a million dollars. And the closest one to us, Wilkes, at 12.69%, would be a difference of almost three-quarters of a percent. And in local tax dollars, that would be $152,154. Four-year average revert. Now, 2020 was a hard year for the county. Everybody knows that. And we got on board. We locked down and tried not to spend a penny and put ourselves in some hard shapes there in 2020. But we reverted $420,000 that year. We done without, is what we did. But you can see there, 150,022, 251,021, 420,020, 174,019, and 90,018. So the five-year average was $217,510 reverting to the county. Goals in process. So the sheriff's office staff, along with county employees, are currently in the process and making preparations of moving the 911 communication center. I think everybody knows about that. The sheriff's started the yellow dot program or in the works of starting the yellow dot program. This program is designed to notify first responders of valuable personal information a victim would have in a designated area or location. First responders would know this information by the visible yellow dot placed on a vehicle. We just recently, I know it's still in goals in process, but we've actually got our bilingual interpreter through the victim services certified program, if I'm not mistaken. He may have some more to go to, but I think he's already started it. And we're looking to upfit the SRT team with combat medical supplies, hopefully, near future. Future goals. Implement additional field training for the jail. Continue to add new and additional training for all staff. We're pushing the intermediate and advanced law enforcement certificates for all of our staff. It requires numerous amounts of time and hours in training to provide, you know, a better service to the citizens. And we're looking to implement Phase 2 of the drug prevention program in the schools, which would focus on the high school. Currently, we're only in the elementary schools. More for the community. The canned food drive, Sheriff's Safety Day, which is actually coming up Thursday. We'd like to invite everybody out for that. And the Christmas for our kids, which also includes the Run for a Claus. On April 21, they had a food drive at the Food Line parking lot. They collected 645 pounds of food and $490 in cash donations. And all of this went to benefit the food closet. This is last year's Safety Day. There was approximately 350 people attended, and there was numerous attractions as well. They're anticipating bigger this year. I think they have about 50 vendors coming, and they're passing out school supplies and things like that. Last year's 5K, this event raised $20,391.79. And it went to provide gifts for children, approximately 605 children, from daycare ages through third grade. Doing a lot and trying to keep our fiscal responsibilities in mind. So as the previous slides have shown, the sheriff's office is always thinking of ways to conserve while maintaining a courteous, professional, well-trained, and equipped staff that is efficient in performing their duties. There is a careful balance in weighing calls versus services. Our fundamental duty is to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of the United States, North Carolina Constitution, and the general statutes that are not inconsistent therewith. We believe that the statistics show that it has been a successful year in our endeavors of making Allegheny County a safe environment for its citizens and visitors. A few words about our staff. The staff of the sheriff's office is, I believe, is second to none. Law enforcement continues to rapidly evolve. There are new court decisions and case laws handed down by the United States Supreme Court, the Fourth Circuit Court of Appeals, and state courts on a daily basis. Deputies and detention officers are tasked with a very difficult job that is both physically and mentally challenging. On any given day, they have to be a lawyer, a psychologist, a peacemaker, a gentleman, a mediator, a caregiver, a social worker, and a warrior. They have to be confident and intelligent to make split-second decisions that could likely take a court months to decide on. These ladies and gentlemen join this profession because they have respect for the rule of law and a strong desire for service of this great county and the citizens therein. In closing, I wish to thank the communities throughout Allegheny County for their support of our sheriff's office. It truly takes a group effort between our citizen, staff, and local government to help us accomplish our mission of maintaining the quality of life we enjoy here in Allegheny County. Y'all have any questions?
Questions?
Chairman. May I ask a question? Nick, would this be possible for you to send that to us so we could review it outside of this format? Admittedly, my eyes don't allow me to read everything you had on that screen. So I would appreciate that.
Save a copy of that to your...
Dare be back in schools this year?
That's the plan, yes. Yep.
The question I have is I'm bumfuzzled over the east and west statistics. Like I want to move. If visibility is a deterrent, maybe y'all are spending too much time in the west. Just a thought.
Well, I think the eastern side of the county would probably be more populated, I imagine, too. Yeah.
Any questions? Thanks. Appreciate you, Nick. Good report. Glenn Edwards, EMS director.
Evening to you all. My comments tonight, I intended to be brief, and they're probably going to be even more brief than I had intended, as Dr. Bryant touched on a couple of the things that I was going to mention in this presentation. To start with, I would like, for anyone who hasn't heard, seen, or read the county's official statement on this change, I'm going to read it. During this year's budget process, Allegheny County EMS department was discussed in detail due to retention and recruitment challenges over the past several years. In an effort to retain adequate staff levels and recruit for open positions for the emergency medical services, Allegheny County is improving base salaries and overtime rates for EMS staff, and will be implementing a new overnight transport policy from 8:00 p.m. until 8:00 a.m. Only emergency ambulance transports, after all other resources have been exhausted as defined in the current EMS transport policy to out-of-county facilities, will be taken at that time. These changes are to mitigate further reduction of EMS services to Allegheny County and will take effect on July 26, 2022. Additional steps must be taken to ensure the future of EMS within Allegheny County. Levels of staffing have fallen over the past several years, causing a restructured approach at recruitment, retention, and continuance of these essential services. And basically, that statement addresses the problems we have: retention and recruitment. When this plan was presented to the EMS employees, it covered the issues that we hear repeatedly. Consistently, we hear more pay, better compensation for overtime, and more time off. When people call me to ask for a job, the first two questions they ask me is how much does it pay and what is the schedule? So this statement tells you why we are trying to head in a different direction. Dr. Bryant sort of mentioned our current staffing issues and some of the problems over the years. And a couple of years ago, sort of when it all started, had a person to leave, and I started calling that the position that refused to be filled. We would hire somebody, get somebody in position. A month down the road, somebody else would leave. We'd get that position filled. Two weeks down the road, somebody else would leave. And I think at one time, it was like two days that we had a full house. So once that position was filled, that was when I think we had like two days and somebody else resigned. And that has resulted in the open position we have had for over a year. And by using part-time staff as best we could, and the county implemented a plan for the EMS full-time personnel to get reimbursed better when they worked extra shifts, we kept it covered as best we could. Then in May, at the end of the month, we had two employees leave. Down three employees. That's 25% of our full-time staff. So at that point, and looking forward, knowing that in three or four years, we were going to have a few employees with 20-plus years and one employee with 30 years that would be retiring, it became really obvious that the answer was not to sit around and do nothing. That waiting until that three- or four-year point when we had more people leave, that would have been one truck all the time with six employees, if you couldn't recruit. So and as I said, this is all about recruitment. If this were only an Allegheny problem, we'd probably have a little easier time working with it. It's a statewide problem, and it's a nationwide problem. And as Dr. Bryant referred to, healthcare services in general have shortages. You hear a lot about the nursing shortage, but not so much about the paramedic shortage. EMS employees are stressed, they're tired, and they're burned out. And that's what makes the extra time off beneficial to him. The shift we had worked up until last week was a 24-on, 48-hour-off schedule. And that has been pretty much the standard in EMS for any number of years. In recent years, a lot of the EMS agencies saw the need for allowing employees to have additional time off. And so there were different scheduling metrics set up. There's agencies that use a 24/72, where the employees work 24 hours and are off 72, gives them an extra day. Some agencies have gone to 12-hour shifts. And some agencies have done what they call a modified 24/48, where you have additional staff who rotate through each crew. And basically, each crew gets an extra day off each week. The problem with that is, yes, we could do it. We don't have the staff to do it. Any of these different scheduling matrices would take at least two, some of them four, and maybe even six more employees than we have now, even if we had both positions filled that are vacant. So I don't know what the answer to that is, but it is about scheduling in some form or fashion, and it is about time off in some form or fashion. We continue to try to recruit people. We've had some success. But in order to get to the place we need to be, where everybody's concerns are addressed as far as pay and overtime pay and time off for paramedics and for the coverage the county desires, we just have to keep looking to see how we can move to get the employees we need. I really don't have a lot else to say tonight. I just wanted to make a short statement, because there had been some questions. Everything that Allegheny County has done in this change falls completely within the guidelines set forth by the North Carolina Office of Emergency Medical Services. I had been in contact with them before and since, and they said, this is what you have to have, and this is what you've got. So we are in line with all those state regulations. Are there any questions?
Am I hearing you that money would fix the problem?
No.
It wouldn't?
No, money and time off. Because those are the two things we hear consistently. The money doesn't solve the stress and the tired and the burnout of working 24-hour shifts.
But if you had more money to hire more people?
Yes, if we had more money to hire, and if we could recruit more people.
What are the qualifications for EMS to be able to work and drive the ambulance?
We have actually changed that. That was changed this budget year to help us in our effort to staff. Originally, our whole entire staff were North Carolina-certified EMT paramedics. With the changes in the budget this year, it allows us to be able to hire EMT basics, to allow them to go to school with a contract with the county, and to obtain their paramedics. And that is the thought of moving forward for these three or four years down the road, when we may be losing people, if you've got the basics who are coming on board, attending class, getting their paramedic, and then they are at that level.
It's this change on July the 26th. Have you had people apply for positions?
Not since then. We had some applications, and one of them came in after this was announced, and that person did indicate that was part of the reason, because the hours were better and the pay was better. I think one of them we would have gotten anyway, and one of them was a basic who was interested in working for us with the new metrics on that, having basics work.
Has there been any reaching out to, like, the junior and senior class in schools to talk to them to...
Normally, when they do career day at school, if someone's available, they take an ambulance and go up and show them the equipment and talk to them about the education, you know, how long they're looking at to get their certification. So there has been some outreach done.
Any results from that?
Not that I'm aware of.
Any questions? Appreciate that information there. From Business, Ms. April Ham, finance officer.
Evening. Just have a couple of things for you this evening. We have a conflict of interest policy. This is connected to the funds that are coming from U.S. Treasury, the American Rescue Plan funds. This is something that is required to put in place. We were provided a template. I reviewed it, and then I sent it on to our county attorney. She did make some changes to it and sent it back to us, and we had another review. So that is before you for consideration.
Can the floor for a motion to accept this? Question here, second. Discussion. Not on favor.
The second part of it is the resolution, just adopting the conflict of interest policy applicable to contracts and subwarrants of Allegheny County, supported by federal financial
Can the floor for a motion to accept? Get a motion here, second.
Second.
Second in discussion. Not on favor. Five oh.
Thank you.
Best for the town who's...
Chairman, members of the board, if you recall, a few meetings ago, we talked about a couple of building... The first one that we talked about was out at the park. This one is now for the splash pad, in which I mentioned at that meeting also. The cost of the permit is $300, and they have asked for that permitting fee to be waived as it will provide amenities for all citizens of the county. So I would recommend the board consider waiving that permit fee cost.
Motion to waive. Motion here, second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Five of them. Thank you. Country Workforce Development. I'll take that one. That's been a position we've had a hard time keeping filled. Talked with Ms. Stacy Barker, who employed at Farm Credit, and she agreed to. I guess, take a seat. Take, I got a motion to accept.
Second.
And a second, any further discussion? All in favor? Five of them. Just one seat filled out of two. We need one more. Put on down the county manager's comments.
Chairman, I don't have any comments tonight.
Mr. Comments. Mr. Mark Evans.
I just want to thank everyone for coming out, sharing your concerns. I think we do have a session planned to sit down and, I think, work through some more of this here in the day next week. All of us together can come out with the right solution going forward to meet the needs and the services of the citizens of the county. So, thank you very much. Expressing and doing it in a respectful way. We appreciate all of our first responders, EMS, all of our agencies in the county who work tirelessly doing what you do. Everybody doesn't have that heart, doesn't have that gift, and those of us that, the rest of us, need to be very much appreciative of it. And sure enough, when the time comes and it's our turn to need those services, not appreciate it as we should, but at that time, we definitely will, so, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to, about the Highway 21 sale this past weekend, I think it was a great success. A lot of the businesses that I talked to said they were very, very busy, so I look forward to it next year. Maybe the weather will hold off a little bit better. The comments about the EMS, I think that, like Mark said, we have a work session planned. I think there are some options that we can definitely look at. We will, I think, do that within the next two or three weeks, maybe sooner. I'm not, I don't remember the date for the work session, but we do have one plan. I thank everybody for coming out and expressing their opinions. Only thing that, about this process, that sometimes is hard to understand is, I know people can't control what's said on Facebook, but most of the comments that I read were people that made a comment without knowing the full facts. And it's, I've been on this board going on eight years now, and a lot of times, it's, you need to understand both sides, know all the facts, instead of making some statements that are not even close to being accurate. But it's, I think it's something that we can resolve. Like Linda said, it's not always the money, it's the scheduling. Nowadays, you just can't make people work. You got to have a qualified person to do these jobs. So we just, you can't go out there and grab somebody off the street that knows how to drive. They have to be certified. That, just like rescue squad people, sometimes that education is 18 months, two years, or whatever. So, I think that we'll be able to come up with a workable solution. I don't know if we'll be able to get out there and twist somebody's arm to take the job, but at least we'll have a package together that they may find a little bit more to their liking. That's all.
Commissioner John.
I'd like to thank all of the first responders that volunteer. It takes special kind of person to give up your family time, to run into buildings that are on fire, to work with people that have been hurt, around people whenever the worst has happened to them. Quite frankly, I don't think we could ever pay you enough. It takes a toll. Thanks doesn't help the time missed with your families. Thanks does not put money in the bank and help you to put fuel in your vehicles. Thanks does not pick up for the things that you will see and the things that you will do. Know that you are appreciated. We will work with this, and we will do the best that we can. Bottom of my heart, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner John.
Thank you all for coming out and sharing your concerns. I'm a voice for the people, just like the other commissioners are. You elect us to figure out, you know, what is the best for the community in a whole. And everywhere I go, people are sharing their fears and their desires concerning the ambulance service. And I agree that we can't wait for a tragedy to happen in our community. They ought to have done something. Obviously, we have an issue here. Might be the time when we need to consider a rescue tax. I know that our first responders have struggled through the years with getting money, and our tax seems to have eliminated this, and, you know, maybe a rescue tax. I know everybody hates to hear that word, "tax," but that's, you know, nobody wants to make that 911 call and somebody not show up either. So, anyway, we're, you know, like the other commissioner said, we're going to have some discussions about this issue, and hopefully, we... Thank you to the Allegheny Sheriff's Department, my job, and... Direction.
Thank you. There's not much that I can add to what all has been said. Been a fireman for years in Piney Creek, not anymore, but helped start Piney Creek, and it does take special people to do what all of you do, the rescue squad, the fire department. It's a lot of training away from home while the wife's at the house listening to the babies cry, and you're out training and taking away from your family, and I'm speaking to both groups, the rescue and the fire. They don't get paid. They don't get dollars for their services, and we greatly appreciate whatever each and every one of you do. And, God, we're working on a solution to this problem. We heard the comments and the concerns, and understand your request of what you want to put back in force, and we're trying our best to accommodate that, and hopefully, that we can get some more hires done, and all that will come together very shortly. Appreciate each and every one of you with a heartfelt thank you, I really do. Allegheny County's come a long ways. I remember back in the day, there was no ambulance service, and you got to the hospital the best way you could and so forth, and we've come a long way, and we want to keep it that way. I appreciate each and every one of you, and thank you for coming out tonight. It's been a very respectful meeting, and I appreciate that greatly. Concludes. Anybody else legal? And motion to adjourn? Motion? Second. All in favor? Thank you, everybody. Appreciate all of you.